Okay, call to order, can Andy, can you do roll call?
Thank you.
Mr. Silva?
Here.
Mr. Guy?
Here.
Mr. Winterholder?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Ms. McGowan? Township manager, township engineer and co-director also present.
Okay, we'll start up, we will do a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First. Did you follow on the roll call?
I did not notice.
Mr. Locke?
Here. Not on.
Yeah, no worries.
So we have the agenda, does anybody have any comments before we proceed? First up, we have the minutes from the meeting on February twenty seven. Does anybody have any comments to make on those minutes?
On those, are we allowed to bring up past minutes?
You have a question about? Is there, is there a problem with past minutes?
No, I was just trying to recall in the past minutes some notes on prior recommendations. You know, comprehensive plan site develop like? Do we have those?
Well, I don't know how detailed that will be recorded. But I mean, we can pull up past minutes without a problem.
We'll strike it for now, thank you though.
Yeah, we can get them if that's the key, if you want to look at them, that's not a problem.
We have a motion?
Just want to make sure you didn't want to correct them, that's what I was concerned about.
We have motion for the February meeting minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the minutes of the planning commission meeting dated February twenty seven, two thousand twenty five.
Second? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. First up, we have the, what are they called, proposed building with courts, shower, locker rooms? And fitness.
Hi guys, good evening, Matt McHugh from the law firm of Claire Hatterson. Here this evening on behalf of the applicant, Newtown Square Racket and Fitness Center LLC. With me this evening, we have Rich Stratton from Chester Valley Engineers, the project engineer. Neil DeSai behind me on behalf of the applicant, and then Rob Langer on behalf of the property. We're here to discuss preliminary final land development plans. For this two and a half acre site, which is proposed for outdoor recreation and phase two, which will be our indoor recreation and in phase two, which will be outdoor recreation. At the two and a half acre site, which is adjacent to the Boiron facility in the Marville development. Phase one that we're presenting to you this evening for the preliminary final land development is the site infrastructure along with a approximately twenty four thousand five hundred square foot. Indoor recreation building, as you'll hear, that actually that building is going to shrink a little bit in our next revision, it's not going to be as wide as shown on the plans right now. It'll be reduced, that building will, will host a mix of padel and pickleball courts, locker rooms, changing areas. Some fitness equipment and then a lounge spectator area, which will have some workstations, tables, place for people to spectate or socialize or to work. Whether it's schoolchildren or for people that are there visiting or spectating. So we, we will then get to, part of phase two will be the outdoor courts, which are subject to a conditional use application, which we filed previously and remains pending with the. With township, so it's a high level review with that, I'll turn it over to Rich Stratton, who can kind of run through the plans in a little bit more detail and then. We've gotten the letter, you know, in the last week or so, we're still evaluating that, we realized we're probably not going to get a recommendation this evening. So what we thought, rather than go through all of the comments one by one, we thought it'd be more appropriate this evening to kind of have a high level discussion. Get your concerns, feedback, and we can incorporate those into our next submission and hopefully come back on a more streamlined basis.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Matt, Rick Stratton, Chester Valley Engineers, civil engineer for the project. You know, the site is, is just to the east of the proposed Boiron facility, which is, was already approved by the board of supervisors. This is within the core area of Marville, so it's a fifty five acre area within the horseshoe of Alice Grim Boulevard and. West Chester Pike, so there's about fifty five acres within that, that area. Fifty of those acres are dedicated to the Lifestyle Village District, the overall zoning is C two. And within the C two, the Lifestyle Village is. And so for the fifty acres of Lifestyle Village, you know, the, the indoor recreation is a, is a permitted use. And so this site is going to be developed with the twenty four thousand square foot building, about seventy nine surface parking areas. Landscaping, lighting, stormwater management. There will be some manipulation of the grades to sort of get things leveled for appropriate parking and for the building pad itself. There'll be water and sewer utilities that feed the building and the plans we propose here show all those details, all the grading and the stormwater and. So what we've done is, you know, tried to, tried to create the site in harmony with the other development next door, but also kind of contemplate future development. As I mentioned, there's about seventy nine parking spaces, some ADA parking spaces as well. And the access to the site is from Alice Grim Boulevard. It has its own unique driveway, it doesn't share a driveway with any of the other developments and, you know, it's. A user or a customer comes into the site from Alice Grim parks and then they can enter into the facility. Stormwater management will be done with subsurface infiltration basin and there's a section of the pavement that will be pervious paving. So pervious paving is a sort of green technology where the water is absorbed through the asphalt pavement itself, there's pores in the pavement, which allows the. The surface water to soak through there and then there's a little bit larger section of stone underneath that and that. Sort of mimics what you would do with a traditional infiltration basin, but you're just spreading it out on a, on a one to one ratio, you're not collecting stormwater and concentrating that infiltration in one spot. It's whatever falls on that pavement soaks right through the ground.
Excuse me if I just may interrupt.
Yes.
You, you, you're saying that pavement will be asphalt pervious pavement?
Yes. That's correct. Not all of the parking lot will be permeable pavement, but the lower section, I guess further south. There's a, there's a section with a hatching on it on the plan that shows the, the section that will be pervious pavement. The other pavement will be regular pavement.
Hatching meaning, so I see the shading, which is the slope, is it the L or is it just a portion of the L?
So on sheet four of the plans, and if you have a, you have a half size set, small size, yeah. If you look really closely, you can see some cross hatching on the lower portion.
Oh yeah, I do there now.
Yeah, very faint, but that section will be the permeable pavement.
So it's essentially the L, the?
Yes.
The short, okay.
Yes, the long stem is just regular pavement.
So this is all.
Right back, yes, and that's the.
Will it be well? Yeah, will it be well visibly shown on the surface? Whenever maintenance is required, the contractor will know not to overlay the entire area?
Yeah, it, it does have a different look to it, I've seen areas before where. Regular pavement butts up against the permeable and it does, it does have a visual, a very obvious visual difference to it. And that'll be all part of the operation and maintenance plan that's required for stormwater. That, yes, they're not going to be allowed to overlay.
That would have to be a true book.
Yes, yes, that'll be documented so that any maintenance, any maintenance folks know that that's permeable pavement. There's, there's landscaping proposed to meet the township's landscaping requirement and there's also some surface lighting proposed. Surface parking lighting proposed, same does. We've, we've requested some waivers here and I can walk through those real quick. But just to let you know, the landscaping waivers that we asked for, we will no longer need when we make some revisions, when we make some revisions. We, the intent is to make all of those landscaping waivers go away, so I think really the only waiver that's going to remain on here is the waiver for. Preliminary and final to be combined. The other three waivers are related to landscaping, so I won't really go through those right now, but. And then as Matt had mentioned, we've received some comment letters, there's the township engineer letter from Pinoni, the Arborist letter, Rockwell and. Zoning officer submitted a, a review letter to us and also the fire marshal. And so we're, we're going through all those now and we also got some comments from the EVC as well.
Are there any that, as you look at are sort of problematic, I mean, usually we get to a will comply at some point, but. Since we're only going to rush over the topics, are there any that look at and think that's a bit of a wrinkle we'll have to really struggle with or?
I think what we need to discuss tonight, there's a couple of comments in here and this was mentioned in both, I think, Pinoni's letter and also. One of the others about the riparian buffers. Okay. Back in October, a conditional use application was submitted. And at that time, the riparian buffer ordinance was fifty feet. And that conditional use plan showed a fifty foot buffer, that's what we were, we were honoring then. And, and then through some dialogue with the township. You know, to sort of roll into our next phase, which is land development. We're showing that fifty foot buffer as well on our land development plans. In between the conditional use plan and in between the submission of our land development plan, the township changed its ordinance. So we are still showing the fifty foot buffer, that conditional use application is still open, we did not close it, we will come back and ask for a conditional use for outdoor recreation at some point. So that's one topic we'd like to discuss tonight.
Part of the rationale that the conditional use, the initial plan was to move forward with the outdoor as part of phase one. And we filed that conditional use application and we began to have conversations with staff and as we went through that process, understanding. I think everybody can admit that the, the outdoor is going to have a much different impact than the indoor and understanding. What the township was going to require as part of the conditional use process, studies from noise perspective, lighting perspective. As we worked through that with the township, everyone kind of set the table, it might, it might make sense to go forward with the indoor first and just get that up. That's going to be the infrastructure and get the building up and then we can evaluate how the outdoor is going to play out, so that was sort of the genesis of, of that decision. And, but the whole project as a whole has always been, you know, based upon that fifty foot riparian buffer and it's shown throughout both the conditional use and the land development plans. I think ultimately it's something that a conversation will have to have with the township solicitor and staff to understand legally, but I think we feel pretty confident that. That we're able to, that we're going to be judged under the fifty foot standard.
And, and the, the building is easily compliant with the fifty and it's the outdoor that you think? Or the hundred, in other words, you think the building's fine? You're, you're saying it's like the second phase is where you?
The whole site design. Is kind of hinges on what that buffer is, if the hundred foot buffer implies, we're not able to provide enough parking and a, and a total redesign would be needed.
Would that cross like the corner of the building? Just looking at?
No, it's, I, I don't think it would cross the corner of the building, but it would cut off a significant section of parking. And probably require some retaining walls. Pretty heavy earthwork to, to stay out of that buffer.
Just sort of towards where the, the township's position up until tonight and there's some new information that we're getting tonight, so I. I only know what the attorney told me as of yesterday. The, the, we were taking this as a new application. And not treating it as part of the conditional use because it doesn't include the conditional use piece, so I think that's going to be the piece that hinges and the conversation that moves forward.
No, I think that's fair and that's something that, that Rich and I can have a conversation on and try to work through that. We understand that.
Let me catch up, go ahead.
Yeah, this is a two and a half acre site, the whole track, is that correct?
It's a leased portion.
Of two and a half?
Two and a half.
Ground lease.
Overall parcel. Grounds, grounds, correct.
The parking area is on the left, the building's in the center and then on the right, is that the area that you contemplate to be the?
Outdoors.
Oops, the?
Right, the outdoor.
Wheels, outdoor, whatever.
Yes, so if you're looking at the parking to the left, building, outdoor courts to the right.
So the, the, the building right now on the plans is ninety six feet in width?
Yeah, and it's going to be shrunk or the width is going to be narrowed a little bit.
It's going to be less than ninety six feet?
We're looking around ninety one, I think is.
Okay, so not significant.
Yeah, but a little bit of a reduction there.
Okay, and what is the? Conceptual use of the open space area or the?
Outdoor pickleball, padel courts, just outdoor recreation courts.
Okay. Okay, okay.
In addition to the interior ones?
In addition to the interior, yeah.
It's all.
That's phase two.
It would be impervious?
Yeah, yeah, pickle and padel would be, okay, I guess I could have this.
Back to the, are you good there?
Yes.
Okay, back on the, so you, in the past, you submitted a plan?
Yes.
That plan, Steve, you theoretically say was technically withdrawn. Then the ordinance changed and now you're asking us to honor the preliminary?
Yeah, the plan was just.
Was stopped.
Withdrawn, it's still active.
It's still active, they just stopped it.
Gets, you know, continued, extended, however you want to, but it's an active plan.
But this, but this plan, I mean, they are talking about that's the space where you would see the outdoor, but they're not wanting to address the outdoor. And that's the reason why the township staff initially took it as a new plan. Because if, if it was addressing the outdoor with the building, we probably would have said it was just an expansion of the plan that they had originally submitted. But they're not, that piece seems to have stopped and so they're not trying to move forward with both at this time and that's the reason why. The staff and the third parties looked at it and said, this looks like a new plan. And so, and I don't think it was clear in the original submission, and I don't know if something's changed, but in, in the original submission, that. I mean, we anticipated that that was outdoor space, but I don't think it was clear that that was supposed to be outdoor space and so for, for recreation. So we had to go based on what was submitted.
Yeah, and it could be just as simple as we add that detail to this plan and then we put a note on the plan that the outdoor portion requires conditional use approval and there's no right to use the outdoor portion. Unless and until conditional use.
So without that approval?
Can't use the outdoor.
Well, without that approval, what I think I heard you say before was you're probably changing the. Physical structure too.
No.
The building.
No, no.
Like the fifty foot?
Yeah. Right, if you were to say that we have to honor the hundred foot setback, yeah, that compliance with that would change the, would lose parking.
Yeah.
What is on this plan, what is the total disturbed area?
Total disturbance is just over three acres.
So it's beyond the lease area?
Yes, we're, we're doing a little bit of grading beyond the lease area, correct?
Have you already applied for the NPTs?
Not yet. We will, there's an open, there's an active NPTs permit for the overall parcel, for previous developments, for Boirons, all part of that. We will amend that NPTs to include this development next.
Who, who has legal authority to grant? The work done off the lease site? The property owner is giving you that consent?
Yes. They're sign off on the plans and they don't have to as part of any, they will sign off on the plans and they will have to as part of the reporting process.
So, so there'll be some type of temporary disturbance easement or something of that nature?
In that nature that will, whether it's a TCA or some type of license.
And is that what's labeled on the cover page, it says potential future expansion area? Shaded, that's what I. On the cover page, I'm looking at.
Yeah, that's part of it, that, that is part of it, we, we think. You know, there's, there's potential that this facility could get, become very popular and that's, we just want to plant the seed that this facility could expand eastward.
Would have sense to address that as well, I, I'm just asking.
But at this point, our land development plan is only asking for approval for.
So you'd have to come back in, start from scratch?
Yeah.
A general, I'm sorry.
Good, I assume that's where the disturbance is over on the, that hatched area, not on the Boiron, obviously.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A general question. To what clientele does this project cater?
Hi, Sunil, I think anybody who's interested in active recreation with racket sports in particular.
So. Not necessarily people who work or live near this particular site, but anyway, right?
I think when, when it's fully developed, they would have the most convenient access to it, but, but we would welcome anybody to, this is not going to be an exclusive private pub, it's going to be open to the public, available, yes.
Okay.
The membership based?
So there's so many different models and, you know, there may be a membership that gives you unlimited access and then there may be just pay as you go for different types of use. I have to flesh that out after I know the exact configuration that I have approved. But I've, I've looked at a variety of models.
Thank you.
Just to disclose, I know Sunil from the squash world.
There you go.
He's a lot better than me, I won't hold that against him.
So. What, what? What's the problem? What, what, what are you concerned about?
I know, I mean, we've realized we got a long list of comments, most of them are going to be cleaned up in, you know. And, and part of it is like the parking is by, we got to provide studies data that we don't have yet, we haven't submitted NPTs, so we wanted to come in here and get. The feedback before we resubmit, come back in with a really clean letter and hopefully be off to the races with this thing.
And I, I'm not exactly certain I understand why the conditional use is being held up, why we are not going forward with the whole project now.
We, we will move forward with the conditional use and it's not a, it's not a delay, it was when we started looking at making the. The investment into the, into the site, there were a lot of additional studies township wanted to see, noise, lighting, et cetera, that aren't associated with the in, with the indoor portion. So we wanted to really focus our efforts on getting the indoor approved and the outdoor will, will, will follow. Regardless of how it's approved, either in one shot or two shots, the business model initially was always to. Open one and then the second to follow after there's, after there's some swell of support and we see how the, the economics of the, of the.
Now, that's a fair, that's a fair understanding, but you're going to have lights on the parking lot, right?
Sure, but I mean, outdoor sporting lights, I think are different.
A little bit brighter.
Yeah.
For the courts.
So yeah, for the courts and it's a matter of, I don't think they're going to have a negative impact, but we hadn't made those decisions yet.
Understand.
And we hadn't done the noise study and we hadn't done those things, so it was, all right, we can really press pause and delay the entire project while we figure that out. Or we can move forward with kind of the easier one, which is the indoor portion and then the outdoor follows right behind it.
I mean, we, we approved lighting on the football field for the high school five, six years ago, so I mean, I.
Yeah, it's all shines down and it's, it's just a process.
Like I said, I don't think there's, I don't anticipate there being some massive, you know, issue, it's just, we got to make decisions as to what we're actually putting out there, what the cost is going to be.
That's perfectly fine, that's understandable, I was just wondering is there some kind of planning option?
Yeah, two also is as we figure out what the demand is on the, on the indoor, that may dictate what types of courts go on the outdoor.
Understood.
So.
Understood, I mean, to touch on the parking and maybe, so the parking now is three point two nine spaces per thousand, what would our, what's our code?
So this, in a lifestyle village.
It's just, I see square footages, but we don't.
Yeah, in the Lifestyle Village, it requires the developer to provide evidence using engineering studies. To evaluate the use as it exists and to provide evidence that they can adequately park it for what's being proposed. So there's not a hard and fast calculation that can be made to say, oh, well, they need seventy nine.
Yes, just to give the, the commission a little bit of background, so when we were evaluating the site to begin with, we went to talk to traffic engineers and they, they went to the ITE. And they said, well, it's not really in the ITE, it's not really a good example here and they said, we can do actual counts, but you know, find the facility doesn't really work, so. There isn't a, a real, you know, great example somewhere in the area, so then we started looking. At, at other municipal codes that have racket sports and parking requirements and unfortunately there aren't a lot that have that or most of them are very outdated, but we did find that Lower Merion. Who redid their zoning code, I think in twenty sixteen, did have a racket sports parking requirement, which basically was four spaces for every doubles court, two spaces for every singles court. And then three per thousand square feet of lounge and exercise area, so that's what we followed here. And we think it's more than adequate from a parking perspective, now we've got to come on the back end and give the township the support for, for how we got there from an engineering perspective, but that's where the number came from. And we think it's, it, it's more, more than sufficient number of, for what the, the use is, but.
How many courts are projected in the indoor space? Estimated.
So, so when we do the phase two, as was alluded to a moment ago, we will potentially change the configuration of, of the indoor courts as well. What I can tell you right now is my, my current layout inside would be a total of five courts, two padel and three pickleball. I'm not locked into that, I'm still working with the architect on the size of the locker rooms and so on.
And then I guess add to that to, we are building all the infrastructure for both indoor and outdoor right now, so that parking is assuming both of those, so it's not like when phase two comes in. There's going to be additional parking that needs to be built, I mean, it's really just putting up the courts and the light, light fixtures and things like that.
What in your opinion are going to be the hours of operation facility?
So I actually asked Neil this question earlier, he's thinking eight AM to eight PM, you know, seven days a week.
So if it is open in the evening. Maybe that may help you in your parking calculation because the time spread. If you take that into consideration.
Sure, I mean, and that's, the, part of the, the struggle was the ITE, the normalized data just didn't really reflect this type of use, so there's not the historical data there to address peak on or off, so we're kind of. Building our case, so to speak, from whatever available information we have, but I think that certainly goes into it.
I mean, looking at it, knowing a couple of the smaller clubs around Philly, that's a lot of parking compared to what some of them have to offer, you know, so, you know.
Yeah, but right now, if you have a.
Yeah, but right now, if you have a, a, an overflow of parking requirement. They don't have anywhere else to, to park other than.
I've been talking to similar than the, the clubs I'm thinking about though, I mean, they, you know, they're.
Does that justify the mistake though on the parking?
I guess I don't, I, one I used to belong to for years and I don't remember it ever having a parking problem.
Oh, okay, I thought you were saying you had smaller parking.
No, no, I see that, yeah, they have less parking and, you know, the one in particular. I never remember it like having any kind of problem.
Is, is the parking something that could be. Fazed as well as the phase of the project so that, you know, and. The idea being leaving that space, you may need to do some grading so that the parking could be put in in the future. But that you leave the space. You know, as, just, just do what you have to do to do the indoor spaces now. Because if you were saying you're coming back in six months, that's one thing. But I'm not sure you have a timeframe as when you're going to be doing the outdoor. And if, 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 if the idea is to figure out what the usage is, is kind of determines that. I mean, we would rather not overbuild parking if we don't need to, that's one of the things, and we've done that in several other projects as well. And I would think that it would help the. The owner in the response that. You're, you're gonna have to bring something in when you go to do the courts. That are exterior, you could pick up and potentially do that work at the same time.
Yeah, I mean, that's something I think we can consider, um, it's certainly something the township had suggested previously as well, kind of this base parking. Um, and we just gotta look at the, the efficiency on the site, whether it makes sense, I think.
I mean, I think you'd want to stabilize the edge of property. You know, along the repairing law, you know, along your line, you're gonna have plantings and you're gonna just, you know, get that all set. And, you know, you don't have any further disturbance. But I mean, you're gonna have to, yeah, it's a math equation.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a, a technical question again regarding the uh pavement. Um, Eric, I don't know if you uh looked at that also. I see on the plan. You have a concrete pad for trash enclosure. And you have uh access for uh mechanical ore in the back area, which is supposed to be. Obvious asphalt pavement. That will. The access of heavy trucks. You need to get them, either to uh get the trash out or uh, or service or whatever. Will cause the uh. Weak. Uh, asphalt pavement to deteriorate fast. So, your service, your maintenance of the different parts of the pavement will be different. And uh. Think that should be uh something to pay attention to. Perhaps. Obvious pavement is not the greatest way to, to handle that here.
Yeah, I understand your concern, um, we'll look into the structural. Strength, the strength of permeable paving and how it's gonna hold out to. Um, vehicles that need to access the dumpster enclosure, uh, fire trucks. Right, um, all those things, um.
Well, fire trucks, I don't know, can they maneuver that at all?
Yeah, we've done a, we've done a turning analysis, it's in the, one of the last sheets of the plan that shows how uh. How the fire, the Newtown township fire truck can get into the site and then, and then leave as well. So that's, that's one of the reasons we, we really need to build most of this parking upfront is to provide adequate access for the fire truck.
Not really pretending that, but how long's the master lease? How long's the ground lease? So if you needed. A little extra land since it's not signed. Yeah, we ran into this on the Boeran deal, was. Piece of ground was mapped out and the deal was done and they ended up encroaching on the repairing buffer, tinkered with the plan a little bit. You know, so if it's still open and. You know, the trees are an issue or something, maybe just push the ground out a little bit.
Yeah, I mean. We can look into if, if necessary, I mean, the goal is to maintain us on the two and a half acres. We've identified future expansion area as well, but. Yeah, it, it's, it's still an area for potential discussion.
And read the hotel, we had the same, you know, it's fifty-five acres. You know, it's not that there can't be any waivers, but.
Yeah.
If you have fifty-five acres thing, you don't have enough room for some trees. Yeah, you adjust the plan a little bit.
Right, and, and, but on the tree issue, we think we're gonna, we're gonna terminate those waivers as well, so we'll be compliant.
Is the hotel uh idea still valid at all? You mentioned the hotel, right?
Well, I was just saying that was a case where we, you know, we had a repairing issue, but there's, you know.
Well, one of, one of the issues I'm. I thought about and we had a show discussion about it, is we have no idea. What the future of this entire truck going to look like. And uh, of course, many years ago, there was some kind of a master plan which didn't work out, but do you have? What the owner have, any idea, any hypothetical layout of what's going to be here or it just? Piece here, a piece there, whatever comes, comes by.
Can you enter the microphone? Thank you.
There have been many iterations over the years, as some of you probably know. Um, but given what's gone on at Ellis Preserve. And all the uses that have been instill, instill uh installed there. We have to rethink, not only today, but going forward, what the township can bear. I mean, how many uses can, how many duplicative uses can you put in one place? Whether it be retail, hotel, or office or others. And so, w- the, the building of Ellis, obviously has set us back sometime, which is fine. But there's still a lot of square footage in Ellis at least yet. We gotta figure out, once that gets settled, once it matures somewhat, and see what the needs are, there's only so much retail space, for example, a place can take. Um, and so, this particular area is the right space for recreational center, outside, there are some wetlands in there. This portion provides us an area where we, we wouldn't put retail in that back there, we wouldn't put a hotel back there. This is like with Boeran and this use is an ideal use for this portion of the site. The core, the, the ma- the area inside is where most of the development going forward is going to be. And that's something that's being, is evolving as we watch Ellis get uh mature and get absorbed.
But do you think you, you will, you intend to develop the rest of our sites sometimes?
Of course, at some point.
All right, and, and any ideas what you?
Well, yeah, we, we have many ideas, but at this point, we can't pursue them aggressively because we don't know, to bring in. A bit, we have quite a bit of interest to be in the area, and let's be honest. What, what's gone on at Ellis has woken up a lot of retailers and other businesses that want to be here. But the question is, economic does work. And a- as we speak, there's quite a bit of square footage still available at Ellis. So. We use, for example, they brought in a steakhouse, well, not doing a steakhouse anymore, right? They brought in all those other uh athletic and, uh, and, and, you know, the, the, the yoga and all those things. We have to decide, well, what are the, and, and also given the state of the world and retail that was happening. Where's the demand? Uh, and that's something that we're on a daily basis talking to all different types of users. There's interest, we have to configure that based upon and take into consideration what's going on up the street. So yes, we intend to do that, we have a master plan today. I'm sure the master plan that was brought up for Ellis years ago is not what ended up happening in the long run. Similarly, we've had many iterations that we can discuss it, but at this point, we don't have a master plan with square footages and uses. Uh, that's been defined, so we can say, let's go out and get it.
I think as the planning commission. To understand that, I agree with you, I understand your point, you're accurate, uh, I'm with you there. We advocate for the residents of the township. And from an understanding of, are you gonna come in every few months and just put in some? New project that you get an opportunity to make some money on. And it spreads out and it's this. Disorganized, hodgepodge project. We've got a logistics center. And a outdoor recreation facility. They're not normal, you know, they're not very well integrated, is it gonna be like that? If you can, if you can get a lease and you can.
No, it's not, look, for, for some of the single larger users, that's the case. You have a hotel that comes in and says, where can we be on the site for hotel? If you had some big box retailers, say, well, where can we be if possible on the site? There is a component that'll be. More traditional retail space. Is there gonna be, you know, how many, how many anchors do you have? How many junior actors do you have? How much into this, how many, how many twenty-five hundred square foot spaces should you have, right? How many restaurant, how many pads can you have? How many restaurants can the neighborhood bear? And these are all things that, you know, while it's a large parcel, there, there are some challenges with topography and some wetlands. So we really have to carve out what we have there and decide, well, what are the uses we want? What are the sizes of those uses? It's not like we're gonna find some yoga store, oh, we got, we'll put that in and then. There will be a component of a retail portion of it, how big, we don't know yet. The configuration of, we don't really know yet, that's really, in fact, what's gonna dictate that is, well. Who else wants to be in Newtown Square? That's not already here.
But then. You mentioned Ellis Preserve, so just as an example.
Yeah.
Years ago, they came, came up with a master plan. And then they started developing sections, phases, et cetera. And over time. The plans changed because the market changed, et cetera. But originally, it was based on. Even a general master plan, and I think this is something we are looking for about this site, to know. In which direction the township is going with. Right now. It doesn't look very organized, all right? I think it should work for your interests as well.
Holding on that thought real quick. From our perspective, which is different than yours, from our perspective. We've seen two projects come in and we're looking at it from the perspective of. Are they just gonna? Develop site by site and it's gonna, whatever they get, they get? That's our perspective, and I think you've got to recognize. All right, well, it's fair for them to feel that way. So I think Simone's point is. Fair.
Oh, it's absolutely fair, I understand, I understand. But understand this, you know, Boeran came to us. And we said, can we make this work for Boeran? Where, where could we make this work? And this portion of the site was the most logical site for Boeran.
No, we are happy that they came and, and you, that, that's fine.
So similarly, Sunil comes to us and said, I want to bring this to Newtown Square, but what's the most logical place to put this, this, this use? And currently on the plan, we weren't gonna just pop in the middle of the, the middle of the core area inside, you know, inside of uh. The, the wetlands as a single use. It made a lot of sense to put it in this part, this area of the, of, of the, of the site for this particular use. Run out Alice Grim. Somewhat in the back, you know, some retailers may not necessarily want to be in the back portion of the site.
Right.
So for this particular use, it made a lot of sense to put it here. It wasn't like we're saying, we have a site available, who wants it? Oh, Sunil said, I'll take it. They came to us and said, well, let's see if we can make this work. Keep in mind, we're also just recently received sewer, and so now we're based on that, we need to configure the site now. And we are having ongoing conversations with brokers, with management companies, with retailers, and internally at the office saying, all right. Sort of, here we go, we're now gonna build the site, let's start formulating a longer term plan. But these things, we're fortunate that Sunil came to us and gave us the opportunity to put this here, and this is the most logical place to put it.
You know, I would add that the Lifestyle Center concept was this wrinkle that it came and went. It was based on a core of twelve to sixteen different company retailers that always went together, Borders Books. And it came and went. And they would open up those ninety percent leased and ninety percent occupied. And it was a home run when it worked. And I think that's gone.
World's changed.
World's changed, and. You know, if you were gonna do that, you had to have a whole plan, because you had to go to all the retailers and say. Here's where Borders is gonna be, and they're like, okay, I want to be within two doors of Borders, you know, here's where they are, you had to have a plan. And that time's coming, that's coming gone.
Discussions, some very, uh, with, with, with. A number of, 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 of businesses that you want in Newtown Square, okay? Ordinarily, I'm sure Ellis had a number of their users that said they were gonna be the anchors, so to speak, because if they're there, it's gonna attract other retailers, we are doing that currently. But it, we want to see, you know, even as we speak today, with what's going on in the world. Everyone's kind of holding back, saying, we don't know what we're doing, we don't know, we don't know if we're gonna expand, we don't know if we want, so it keeps changing, it keeps, you know, the, the, our, our, our. The choices are changing, and so to come to you and say, this is what we're gonna do and then not do it. Um, we don't want to do that.
That's fine. Do we have any public comment? Name and address or who you're representing, depending who it is tonight?
Good evening, Sheila Sullivan, Phoenix, one twenty Beachwood Road, Newtown Square, P A, I am the chair of the E A C. Now, as you know, we've been through this development many times, and anyone who's lived in this township for years has witnessed. These tractors being moved back when the soil was being brought in, when these manmade slopes were made, when all the trees were removed. So we know we have a long history with this property. And it's confusing because they've been able to take advantage of that property for years in terms of protecting their rights. To not really pay the full tax load. So, going forward in August, if you recall, all of us were in this meeting, Boeran was here. At that time, the developer, now it's not the applicant here, the developer was trying to impose upon Newtown Township. The forty-foot repairing buffer. We had clearly stood the ground that we needed the fifty-foot because that was what the code was. And we gave indication at that meeting to the developer that that code was going into effect in September. On September ninth of twenty twenty-four, the border supervisors gave public notice. That this one hundred foot repairing buffer, chapter one forty-three of our code was going into effect. On October fourteenth, all supervisors approved that and that went into effect. We were all delighted because we were tired of having to come here and beg you about the hundred foot repairing buffer. And it's not because we want to obsess about that, we saw these photos, as you did, of all of those homeowners. Down with their homes being flooded, they showed you photos of four and five feet of water in their homes. And they are the ones that are gonna be receiving these waters. We talked about Phillips Lane, we talked about Reese's Run, Crum Creek. Go there on a storm day and you will know what's happening. That water also goes into Springton Port, which is very important, not for us, because we drink out of Pickering, but for the people that drink out of that water. So, on October eighteen, which was five days after the code was put in fact. The applicant did protect their right to the fifty-foot repairing buffer. They threw together a quick plans, this was an outdoor port with porta potties. Which were very nice porta potties, and the conditional use was because there was no structure on this land. They were trying to slap something in to protect their rights and the, the application was hand delivered on October eighteenth. That was past our thing. The township was really concerned about that as well, some of our supervisors. Worked very hard with our state reps because the applicant now had three bites of the apple. Because we're a class two township, they had that right for the five days. Two of our supervisors, Supervisor Artiri and Supervisor San Francisco, worked with our state rep. On March twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-five, the state of Pennsylvania finally recognized. That a class two township should not have that five days after. And they codified that on March twenty-fifth. On March twenty-seventh, this land development application was submitted. Now, remember, from October, after we reviewed the property on November twenty-second, and we gave a very detailed. As well as the township reviewed that on November twenty-second, that plan went nowhere. It was listed on your uh schedule and every time it was coming up, it was re- removed. So that plan was for an outdoor courts with porta potties. And we were all concerned with the same things you were talking about, where is the overall plan with this? We have seen four developments going onto this property and it's very hodgepodge. And our other concern is, this sounds great about the permeable surface. But these, remember, these are manmade uh slopes and steep slopes. The water that's gonna go into the infiltration bed was wonderful, you were thrilled with that, right? However, the water's coming down here to the permeable surface, that's in the repairing buffer. You're asking a wet sponge to hold more water, which is not really good. And what about the water that's coming down here to the site? That's going into the bloody stream that's already flooding our neighbors. You, you saw all of this, we just understand the developer had a time in October. To have the rights and they put their fort in the door. But now, we can't hold the door open for them, they had their opportunity, they're coming into us. And they're basically setting themselves up to have this property one hundred percent covered in asphalt and even if a section of it's permeable. And planting outside the property lines. The populations that they did were on the full fifty-five acres, this is a two point five acre property. And the disturbance is three point two acres of disturbance because they're trying to plant it. So we're begging you, look. You know, at this end of the day, let them do whatever they need to do, I, I, we want the applicant to be happy and, and profitable. We showed them, the, even we have, hopefully you did your market research, we've looked in this area, we found thirteen different pickle and pedal ball courts. There's one sixteen courts going into Brew Mall that's opening in two months, the one in Melbourne, Bounce has twenty foot, they have. The one in Melbourne, Bounce has 20 foot. They have game leagues, all of these other entities. And if people are going to be looking, we want you to be successful. We want you to do the research. We do not need any more empty buildings. We don't need the buildings to be built, just like that lumber building that's sitting there idle. So if you're going to be built, we ask them to do it right, be successful. But the 50-foot repairing buffer is something that I can't see any pathway toward. I'm not a supervisor, but I would say that you are trusted with the community. And the 100-foot repairing buffer was on our comprehensive plan from 2016. Okay? So it's been on the radar for a decade of how important that is. So we're begging you, please, to make sure that this issue is not voted on tonight until we flush out.
They're coming back. They're redoing it. So what I would say is, I assume you'll have a report?
The, the AC is, it's in your documents. The AC letter gave everything.
So yeah, they're coming back. They've, they've said that out of the blocks today, so.
But even if that is, the state closed the door on March 25th.
I understand. Well, I, we're going to make sure Mr. Score shows up for the next meeting and we can kind of have a conversation about where that plays out. And you'll have another bite at the apple because there'll be public comment at the next meeting.
But as with anything, everything should be following the codes and that's what we're all asking. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you.
Thing else noted, the plans that they have have just been passed their five-year wetland delineations. We were accepting that for now because we're giving you that three or four month grace period. But any new plans coming back from the developer will have to have new wetlands delineation of being active within five years. That's what is the code and best management practices in the state. That's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Municipal code or Newtown Township code?
I'll let our engineers.
I, I, I didn't understand that last sort of.
She's referring to the date that's on their wetland delineation report. Hello, it was 2019, but I believe it's part of Boeran. You guys did reassess it? 2024, right?
Yeah, the wetland scientist visits the site, collect areas. Um, so we're on, um, the wetland scientist walked that, that corridor right there, verified that the previous delineation was still accurate. And so we'll have him do that for the site as well.
Um, I'll open up if you have one to add and then I'll go to the commission if they want to.
No, I think we appreciate any other questions or commentary at this point.
Anybody have anything?
Your store water management plan that would be sufficient for the outdoor courts as well if that were to get approved?
Yes, it's been designed for the outdoor courts as well. Yep. Assuming that those will be impervious.
I have a question about, oh, so I'm looking at your plan sheet nine, 21, about the infiltration rates. And all the infiltration rates listed in the table on this plan are below one inch per hour.
Yes.
How would that work?
The calculations show that that rate will work with the size of our systems. And with that, the permeable pavement, it's, it's, the rain is falling on there on a one-to-one ratio. So even though it's a low infiltration rate, it's not a concentration of stormwater from many acres. It's only the rain that falls in.
Well, I, I'm sure our engineer will review all that.
Yes, he has. And we've, we've also cut the infiltration rates in half as, as a safety factor.
Of course.
Yeah.
A little low. What do you think, Eric?
Uh, it is not unheard of. And actually, one of the review comments, they're, we're asking for some more detailing information related to infiltration on the facilities for the property. So that is, that is the list and being vetted.
Okay. Well, we'll see you next month or the month after? Hey.
Oh, yeah.
You might. I just have, I guess, one point to make and it really involves the way the zoning code deals with Lifestyle Village. And you're viewing it from an entire track perspective. And we talked a lot about lease lines and things like that. I think it's part of your purview to decide whether or not the use is permitted, but whether it's permitted on a lot that's, or a leased lot or leased area that's properly sized. And the concern that I have in looking at the projected or potential future expansion area, and I don't know if we can, i- i- it's identified in hashed air, hashed gray mark or the cover sheet. So my concern is this. And whether or not they have a legal right to maintain the 50-foot repairing buffer zone or the 100 repair foot uh repairing buffer zone is up to the legal, uh, legal minds here. But that projected future area, you, it looks like you're getting to a pinch point around that curve of the road. And when you apply that 100-foot line, even if it's to the future projected area, you're reducing that. So is it more effective to include that on a broader scale under this plan? To effectively eliminate and maintain the 100-foot buffer? You could use that land more effectively now. Instead of what I'd like to, unfortunately, you're kind of, I feel like it's kind of, kind of being crammed in onto a very small, narrow leased area. Uh, when that land may not be very viable in the future or anything else.
An overall plan in this case would be a little helpful.
Yep.
Yes.
So I just think that's something for you to consider.
You know, with the 50 versus 100 foot and asking for relief on project by project, how much aggregate relief is going to wind up being asked for? Your idea for this parcel takes care of that in a sense. You know, are you going to come in project by project and ask for relief for some issue? And then we aggregate the whole thing and, oh, it's only 10 feet here, 10, and it winds up being a lot, a lot. And we do have water problems. I live at the, by Crum Creek. We have houses getting water all the time. And is the water runoff from this project going to be better or worse? As an outsider looking at it, like, it can only be worse. You know, are you going to make it actually better? You're asking for relief. Relief from what? You're asking for relief to be able to enter the code.
That's a debate as to, they haven't asked for relief yet. They, they might be asking for it.
Well, to some degree, you can make an argument that 50 versus 100 feet is relief.
Right. No, I understand. I mean, if they're entitled to 50.
Understood. I'm just saying, you know, they're going to argue for it because they want the relief.
Right. And, you know, township's going to have a position. Yeah, we'll kind of.
Well, the idea of 100 foot didn't come out of the blue. That's because of.
The comprehensive plan that we put together back in 2016.
And because some areas are getting flooded and such.
Correct. I want you to make money. I want a good project. I want it to work. You guys are good guys. This is not in. We got to advocate for the township though. And I go to Wawa and I run into people and sometimes I get looked at.
Don't go to Wawa.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. Okay. Everyone good? So you think 30, 60 days? What do you, what's kind of an estimate of? Just, just for.
What do you think to?
Thought process.
Timeline or resubmission, probably.
We're going to hustle and get them in as soon as we can, whether or not we'll be back.
30.
30 or 60.
Do we need an extension letter? I assume we get that standard.
If we do, we'll provide one. We do have um renderings of the building. If, if you guys want to see and then, you know, we can close on that.
Yep. Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
I would add, looks nice. Looks nice.
That's the pervious pavement area there?
It's the L in the back.
Yeah.
Same height side.
Yeah. Good building.
Thanks, Frank. I like it.
Yeah.
I mean, you need a certain amount of height and, you know, got nice glass and.
All right. Thank you very much for coming in, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Stephen.
Take care. I'm going to hand the baton to you, Steve.
All right, um, the next thing, I, I just gave them my agenda tip. Uh, the next thing on your agenda is talking about comprehensive plan update. Um, so I just wanted to let you know that the board gave me directive uh to put out an RFP, which we did earlier this year, for a consultant to come in and assist us with the comprehensive plan. What I asked the board that we'd consider for this round of the comprehensive plan, typically comprehensive plan is done every 10 years. And we finished our last one in 2016. Hard to believe that we're 10 years already, um, that we're, we're looking at this. Um, but our strategic plan was also had come to the end of its life. And so my recommendation to the board was that we combine the two to have a document, it'll probably still be two separate documents, but to have two documents that are closely intertwined together so that we carry out all the things of the comprehensive plan throughout the actions of our strategic plan and, and vice versa. And so the board thought that was a good idea. Um, and so we went out and we looked for consultants who could help us do both. We had uh two consultants who responded to the RFP. They both presented to the board at the last meeting, uh, which was May 14th. Um, I'm sorry, April 14th. I'm jumping ahead. Uh, it was April 14th. My understanding is the board intends to uh make a rec, or make a decision Monday night as to which of the two consultants we will have to go forward. I share that with you because the planning commission is one of the key pieces as we move forward in the comp plan. You will be being reached out to for input um uh throughout the process uh because you get to give feedback and, and do that. And I hope that you will take the time and do that and make sure that uh as key stakeholders in the township, that you participate in this process uh and make sure that hopefully we end up with a really good plan, not only as a comp plan that will be updated and hopefully with a strategic plan that'll give us the steps to make sure we carry out all the things that are in the comp plan. And so uh the, the strategic plan piece is actually going to be a four and two, three-year terms to go for the 10 years. So there'll be an initial four-year strategic plan helping us get started in year three of that plan. We will actually start, or four of that plan, we will actually start planning the next three years and continue to do that as we go so that we are constantly keeping that as the document. Not only the strategic plan, but the comp plan in front of us for budgetary decisions, for board decisions, and hopefully for yours and the zoning hearing board's decisions as well.
Hmm.
So that's the plan going forward. So I just wanted to give you a quick update, letting you know uh where we were with that.
What, when do, what do you think the timing is to, let's just pick it, the first meeting where we actually discuss it and?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not 100% sure on that yet. Um, I, I would think that uh the consultants will want to kind of hit the ground running and try to get a few meetings in, in May and June uh before we get into the mid, you know, the summer months where everybody kind of disappears and goes on vacation. Um, because then we get into the fall and we really just, you know, we want to be passing this by fall of 2026. That's the goal. Um, so we've given them about a year and a half to kind of put everything together. And so my guess is there'll be an initial kind of get started meeting or two initial meetings probably early in, in May and, and June. And then um we'll get some work done over the summer, uh get, you know, pulling some data that they need and things like that. And then in the fall, we'll probably hit it pretty heavy uh with big public meetings and things like that.
Are the two consultants local with experience in this region?
Um. What I know of the two consultants, one of them we've worked with before. Um, Simone Collins was helped us with the master plan for uh the Meadow Preserve, has also helped us with some other plans in the township. Um, C H P, uh, I forget what that whole thing stands for. Um, they are also local. Uh, the key person there is actually the, their key consultant for the towns, would be for the, if they get it for the township, actually is a prior manager, um township manager, uh is their uh key consultant. And she has experience in pro, um, uh, project management, things like that, but they have, their team has people to understand comp plans and, and strategic plans.
Now the map review?
Yes. So if you could pull up the map, please? One of the comprehensive plans, um, suggestions and things that they thought that the township should do was come up with a official map of the township. And what does the official map do? The official map of the township, uh, can we take that down, please? Okay. The official map of the township sets aside properties uh that would be protected by the township. Um, some, in our case, some of them are already properties of the township. Obviously, we don't want to sell off. We want to protect. Um, and then some of the properties would be, if we could send, make the map go up a little bit, please? Um, or down, however you want to look at it. Uh, I would say down, I guess. There you go. Uh, so for example, uh, huh?
So I think he's having a mouse problem.
Yeah, I think, I think we are. Um, uh, so like one of the properties, for example, that we don't own, Garrett Williamson, uh, is a property that we would want to protect going into the future. Uh, we think that would be a key property to remain open space. Uh, if, you know, if they ever were not to be able to continue to do what they do there, we would want to make sure that it stayed open space in the township. We think that's a key piece. Um, and other examples uh are some of the municipal authority properties that uh either we lease now or, for example, uh, we lease uh Drexel Lodge Park, which I can't read the number on this one. Hold on a second.
Who's the owner?
The municipal authority. And so we, so it's 36 here. Um, this property right here, property 25, is another example. This L-shaped piece here, uh, which is property three. This property right here, number five, they're all owned by the municipal authority. And uh, we feel like it's important. I think they actually own this one over here, 26 as well. Um, so we feel that it's important that those properties stay open space or at least, you know, potentially passive recreation or recreation and open space for the township. And so, or places for trails, um, that's another piece of this. So this will be something that probably, this is not the final, like, this is a start. We were going to call this our official map. And so what this does, why do you do official map? Why is it important? Um, what the official map does is before a landowner could go and sell a piece of this property, they would need to come to the township and they would need to say, we're going to go sell this. And it would need to give the township an opportunity to potentially be the purchaser.
You get to write a first offer essentially by tagging it.
That's exactly. And so that was the main reason that this was put together. Um, and uh, and that was the purpose. And uh, so this is, uh, this came from our Trails and Greenways team. And can we make it just a little bit smaller so that the whole map kind of shows there? And I would tell you.
Yeah.
You want to connect?
Huh?
Philosophical.
Oh.
You, you didn't pay him for the right you took away.
But we're not taking your right away. There, I mean, they saw the right to sell it. We're not keeping them from selling it.
First right of use.
We just, we just get an opportunity to potentially be that buyer.
Don't you always have that?
We don't necessarily. You could go sell your property, never come to me and talk, right? I mean, you don't.
Why wouldn't you just tell those individual property owners?
Why wouldn't you just tell those individual property owners, the township presently has an interest in acquiring your property, should you wish to ever sell? Why not tell them now?
Well, basically, that's what we're doing. We are telling them. Part of this will mean that we have to notify all those property owners and the property owners around them.
You do anything, like you put something on their title? Like, say they get under contract and the money's hard and they have no way to get out of that. They they've committed to sell it to someone else. And, you know, township shows up and says, no, you can't do it. Like, well, I don't have a choice. I, you know, they put their deposit down at that risk.
It's, I mean, they're gonna, I mean, the way this is done, as it becomes an official map of the township, it's, I mean, they'll be, they'll be on notice that that's the case, you know, I mean, they're going to be told upfront. They have a chance to come in and challenge it.
Well, it's like if it's not a public hearing, just like anybody else would. They sell it to someone else. Or you, look, they sell it and you pass. What happens at the second.
Every agreement of sale is gonna have a designation of what the permitted use of the property is. So as a consequence, this is gonna have a a check on it that limits the mark, well, doesn't really limit the marketability. However, it doesn't pose a property owner restriction. I, I, it's a concept. I think that warrants consideration.
I'm just thinking where it goes sideways and the township says, no, you can't finish your sale to Joe because we had first dibs because we put a map together. You never told us. You made a contract to Joe. He gave you fifteen.
I mean, obviously, if they if they went out and did that tomorrow while we're putting the map together.
A month, two months, a year from now.
But a year from now, they'll be, but a year from now, as the property owner, they will have been, I mean, just like any other zoning change that we do. The property owner will be notified. They'll have an opportunity to come in and speak at a public hearing and and share their position. They will have an opportunity to challenge us on it, just like any other zoning change would be. All this does is it says to the community, these are parcels that we think are important to maintain as they are, or at least in a way that allows for the township to have open space that we think is important, or it trails through those properties, because that's really more of the edge where that's on the Aqua property. But you can condemn the township. We can condemn the property now if we want it. We absolutely have a need for it. We absolutely could, but we would, but there's limits for how I can, limits for ways we can condemn. In other words, I can't just go condemn for any reason. There has to be a certain reason. Why, why do we want to keep them open space? Because that's what we've heard. What, one of the things that we heard in the comp plan was that we want more open space. We want to maintain the open spaces in the community. That's what came out of the comp plan, and this is part of that movement to try to make sure that we can maintain the properties that we think are vital to being open space.
So just to prevent like future development on them?
It doesn't, it also does. So let's, so let's take for a moment the, and I mean, Garrett Williamson is the is the biggest piece, right?
Right here, right?
Right. So Garrett Williamson is this piece. Yes, thank you. Is that piece right there. So that's the biggest piece. If Garrett Williamson came in and said, we're in a position financially where we're going to need to sell off land or we need to sell off, we need to sell the whole piece. We can't, we can no longer fulfill our mission. It gives the township an opportunity to say, yes, we want to purchase that land and move forward. We have a limited period of time to do that. If we can't do that, they can move forward with selling it to any developer and do what they want. Now, it's still subject. It's still subject to whatever the underlying zoning is. So I believe that Garrett Williamson is residential, except for a segment in the middle that's SU one, which it's a whole different story. But Garrett Williamson is zoned residential, so they couldn't come in here and build a commercial site without having to go through and change zoning and do those kind of things.
But it's really right at first offer, like you, right at first offer is, we make a deal. You know, you offer me a hundred grand, or I say, pay me a hundred, you say it's too much, I move on. The next guy pays one twenty, or he pays seventy. Either way, you're out. Like, you you had one bite at the apple. You make a deal? Or is it R F R, right at first refusal, where I get a deal and you get to match it?
I believe, I believe the only thing we can do is similar to how it would be if we condemned it. In other words, I can't, I can't go in, I, and I I would have to defer to Rich, and I may be wrong on this, but my understanding is Garrett Williamson, let's say the value, if you went out and appraised the Garrett Williamson, and I'm using a number that I know is not right, is a million dollars. I know it's more than a million dollars, but let's say it's a million dollars. They get an offer for two million dollars. I I don't think I can pay two million dollars. I don't think as a township, we can pay two million dollars for that, because that's not a fair market value if the appraisal's a million.
Let's say they told you a million, you said no, and they ended up selling it, and someone showed up at eight hundred. Do you have a right?
No.
So if you're one bite at the apple.
One bite at the apple.
Interact, yeah.
That's my understanding.
So that's right at first offer, not right at first refusal. Like, you're out of the picture once you don't make a deal.
What are you asking us tonight about this issue? What I'm asking you is, this is the proposal that, so the this is the proposal that was given to the board initially to come here, board of supervisors, to come and go through the process of having an official map for the township. So in order for us to do that, it has to come before planning because it's a zoning change. Just like if we were to be, if we were to sit here and be changing any one of these parcels to a different zoning, you would be, you would be reviewing that and saying, yes, that makes sense, or no, that doesn't make sense. So it's, so that's kind of the view that you need to look at it from. I I think that Rich Secor should come here before us and tell us what what the legal authority is for doing that. And I think that we should each be provided a copy of that map so we can look at it and evaluate what exactly an official map means before this board makes any recommendation. That's fine. We will, we will, we'll get Rich to come. I think you wanted Rich to come.
I want to, yeah, I want to port that out.
Yeah. I I I just, I don't think that, I'm not prepared to say, okay, this is a great idea. Let's do it tonight. I want to.
I don't know what I'm recommending.
Yes.
Yeah.
I want to know, wait, what are we doing? And and, I mean, I, I understand that we want to keep it open space.
What's the right way to do it?
What's the right way to do it? And this might be it. Might be it. Again, it's, yeah, okay, we'll do that. Yeah.
And who's who selected these areas of interest?
So so it was, so they, originally, the Trails and Greenways committee came in and they actually had quite a few more on the map, and the board said, let's take a smaller bite at this apple at a time. And the focus was, let's make sure that all township properties are already on the map as official for the township, that all municipal authority properties would be on the map. Then we said, are there any other key pieces? And we looked at the, particularly because it was up next to the Crum Creek. The property that was, actually, it's all Aqua property. I can't imagine they're going to sell it. I think they're going to hold on to it. But at least to make sure if Aqua were to sell, particularly up there, we don't want land, we don't want that to develop that close to the stream. Some of it couldn't be, but there are some places that could be. And then Garrett Williamson was the other one that was discussed. Those, I don't think there's any other pieces on there that are not either already owned by the township and or the municipal authority. I think it's just those two that were owned by, there's a couple that are owned by Aqua. Right along in here, the township already owns these, this, and then this piece here of Garrett Williamson. Okay.
One more question.
Yep.
If this did, you know, go through and get approved and whatnot. You wanted to add a new partial, but they have to make a whole map, a whole new submission, or how would that?
Yeah, so my guess is that eventually that will happen because we want to really, the problem is, we did not want to say for a trail, we didn't want to say a whole parcel. We wanted to come back and say what portion of the parcel we were looking at as as a possibility for a trail. And so my guess is what you will see is that we'll come back with a, with a, with a map that has like some updates of some corridors that we're looking that we think are important. Or let's say, for example, when when I look at this section of, like, I look at sections of the town and where parks are, right? So when I look here, we have, you know, there's a natural place, we have parks, people can kind of, who live in this area can all access this park or this park. But when you think about this group of folks, right? This is Goshen Road here, and this is, there's Fox's Run, and there's the old railroad bed here. This whole group has none, right? So do we, at some point in the future, say, we probably should look at buying a couple pieces of property? What pieces of property would they be for, potentially for a park? And what would that look like? I will tell you, it's getting harder and harder to do that because everybody that buys a piece of property puts a multimillion dollar home on it, and we're probably not going to take down a multimillion dollar home to put on a park. But there might come availability of a piece, and but it might not be big enough unto itself. And so therefore, we might say, well, we bought this one. Let's see if we can, maybe the three properties that surround it ought to be considered for future possible purchases, because that would allow us to put a decent sized park in that area, and it would be a good investment for allowing people to have outdoor space and those kind of things. That that's an example of how it could be done. I'm not saying that we would do that. I'm just saying that's an example of something that could be done in the future. Any other questions?
Do a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Hi, thanks for coming.